Welcome to this forum for the City Council of Ramsey for candidates in wards one, Ward three, and at-large seats. I'm Kay McCully. I am a member of the League and I'm a resident of Ramsey. All candidates were invited tonight and all five are here. The League of Women Voters is quite an ambitious organization, 94 years old. These are some of the things we do. We encourage the informed, active participation of all citizens and all levels of government. We work to increase understanding of major policy issues. We influence public policy through education and through advocacy. But there is something that League does not do. The League never supports or opposes any political party or any candidate. Instead, the League does provide voter education opportunities, such as this evening, to bring the candidates and their views to you, the voters. The views expressed tonight are the views of the candidates, not the League of Women Voters. If you're interested in League, check out the League of Women Voters Minnesota website. Simply Google or search for "League of Women Voters Minnesota." Women, and yes, men also can join. There's equal opportunity and room for everybody. The moderator tonight is Jerry Nelson. Jerry is a member of the League of Women Voters. She's our Voter Service co-chair and she is a resident of Champlin. Jerry.
Thank you, Kay. And thank you, candidates, for being here and audience for being here as well. Welcome. We'll start our candidate forum tonight with Ward one council. And we have Jill Johns running in that seat and she has no opponents. So we'll just spend a few, a little bit of time getting to know her and how she feels on issues. So Jill, would you give us your opening statement, please?
Great, thank you, Jerry. Well, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and the League for hosting this event. I think it's a great community service, so thank you for doing that for us. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Jill Johns and I'm running for Ramsey City Council in Ward one. I've lived in Ramsey for 22 years with my husband Jeff and our children Dan and Lauren. I've served on several community boards, including Ramsey Youth Athletic Association and Northern Lights Soccer for dozens of years in a variety of capacities. And I'm currently serving on the Board of Directors for Youth First Community of Promise. I also served 16 years with Ramsey's Park and Recreation Commission as its chair and vice-chair. We recently dedicated a new park building in the ward in Elmcrest Park. And that was an improvement that was in the works for many, many years. And I was kind of part of that process and evolved from the very beginning. So it's kind of fun to see some of those projects come to fruition. The experience I gained while serving on one of Ramsey's commissions prior to stepping into city council is actually invaluable. It provides strong roots in the community and provides relevant experience I think that just isn't easily duplicated in other kinds of volunteer situations. So I'm very grateful that I had that opportunity and that I have the experience to bring to city council. If it seems like I was just knocking on your door recently, within the last year, I was. I was just elected to city council 14 months ago. And that was during a special election. I'm thrilled to be here tonight and I thank you for allowing me to be your council member. And I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Jill. First question is, what is your vision for developing the core? I just found out that the core is this area around City Hall.
Yeah. Well, it isn't necessarily my vision, it's kind of the city's vision. We do have a strategic plan in place that allows for some development in there. But we also have a comprehensive planning process and plan in place to oversee the various development features of that. So, you know, I support going through that process. I think that the city has a really good citizen engagement process that also sort of helps facilitate some of that. But primarily, you know, the things that are happening in the core is going to be a market-driven approach to, you know, the kinds of businesses that come in there and the kinds of development and with the city and with housing, or excuse me, with businesses and housing developments.
Thank you. What would you, what would be your plan for financing street improvements and more aggressive street maintenance?
Well, actually, we, with this last budget process, we fixed that problem. It's something that has been, you know, on the city's plate for a number of years. Our roads are aging and they need to be fixed. We're getting to a part, our roads are getting to an age where they're kind of ready for reconstruction in a lot of them. And that carries, you know, a pretty big price tag. And so we were hearing from people that the process of special assessments, you know, was kind of overly burdensome. So we worked with our charter commission to try and ease some of that burden through that process. And we've managed to fit it into our budget this year. We've, we're able to keep the, was that my, we were able to keep our rates consistent from prior years, our tax capacity rate. And we were able to fit roads and construction through bonding.
Okay, be sure that you're talking right into the mic. Thank you. What city need would you, would be so important that it would be worth a raise in taxes?
Well, you know, I think we managed to fix the roads, but that really was a priority, I think, over the last year. And we've been working, you know, pretty diligently to try and figure out that process. So, you know, in my opinion, I think, you know, we're providing the public safety and other features. Public safety, transportation is a big one, which, you know, kind of incorporates the roads. Those are our biggest. I'd like to see us be able to do something, not necessarily raising property taxes, but doing it more through the process, through economic development and being able to raise revenue through other sources like that.
Okay. What attributes would you bring to the council to help members work together for the benefit of the city?
Oh, I love that question. You know, one of the processes that I frequently used when I chaired the Park and Recreation Commission was public engagement. And I'm really delighted to see that the city has really rolled out that process much more strongly and utilizing it. We use that process to bring together families and residents in the area around, in Ward one, on 167th and 47, to kind of try and do some planning and structuring and seeing what the residents would like to see in that development area. We did it again in the old municipal center where we were looking for direction from citizens on if they'd like to see housing or how they wanted to see that, that building used, whether it was a data center or something like that. So very much encourage that kind of process and, and the city is doing a lot more of it. So I'm very encouraged by that.
Have you accepted any donations from developers in Ramsey? And if so, or if not, do you consider that a conflict of interest?
I have a whopping $40. I haven't done any fundraising at all this year through this election cycle. I don't have a sign out there. I haven't done any literature, so I'm doing a very low key. Since I'm unopposed, I figure I'm not going to be looking for donations or money from anyone, so, no, I have not.
There are many teens experiencing homelessness in our community. What can or should the city do to help these teens?
Oh, you know, I was just recently appointed to Youth First Community of Promise. And it's a program for at-youth risk and it's an after-school program. And they have done so much outreach in the community and working with our police officers and other community members in, you know, helping identify these children and making sure that they have safe places to live and, you know, meals provided, get the education and those kinds of things that they need. And just sort of giving them that helping hand. So I think more programs like Youth First and, you know, really putting our resources and volunteer efforts, you know, behind organizations like that is really important.
Okay, here's another question. Would you support extending the North Star service to St. Cloud? Explain your position.
Hmm, that's a good one. I hadn't thought about it. I am a supporter of, you know, whatever kind of public, public transportation we can do to help ease some of the burdens. I think probably from Ramsey's standpoint, it's more important to see development of Highway 10 and improvements along there and getting that connection between Coon Rapids and Ramsey. I imagine ultimately, we probably will, with the college up there, there will be, I want to think about that one. I think I would support it. Ultimately, I would support it, although it's, it's so busy with the rail, with the oil and things like that. The rail system has just gotten so busy. It's kind of gotten into a point where we need to look at other ways because we're competing with each other.
Thank you. What is your, what is your philosophy of the purpose of city government?
My philosophy on city government? Oh, that's a good one. I think for me, it really gets down to the citizen engagement part. I mean, I think that's the part that speaks to me the most is, I really feel like we're representing, you know, the people that are here tonight and we're just a voice for those people. You know, we need to make those decisions and we need to gather the information and not everybody thinks the same way. But I think that our role is primarily just to be a reflection of what's going on and, and being that voice.
Okay. What can the city do to be more bee and pollinator friendly?
Well, I have a butterfly garden and bee garden, but, you know, I think, I, that is not something that I have thought about very much. I apologize. I, I think just, you know, the natural landscapes and incorporating them maybe into our parks as we're doing some landscaping and having naturalized areas is probably, you know, an opportunity where we could do more to encourage more natural pollination of the, of the butterfly and bees, minimize use to pesticides, those kinds of things are certainly important as well.
Okay, I'm going to ask you one more question here. How will you navigate a need to represent the constituents in your ward if there is a conflict with the needs of the rest of the city?
You know, I think, kind of going back to the last question and that you're, you're there to represent and reflect, you know, what, what your constituents want and need. And, you know, there's many times where we all don't agree on what's going on. And then you, you sort of, you really do have to look at, you know, what is best for your small ward or community and, and be that voice for them. It may not be what is best for some other ward or this, but as long as it's good for the city as a whole and, and is a reflection of the existing, you know, businesses and residents and things that are there, I don't think you can, can go wrong.
Okay. May we have your closing statement, please?
Oh, sure. Well, I'd like to thank the League again for hosting us and having us here tonight, this forum, and everyone in the audience for good questions. I'd also like to thank the other candidates who are here for stepping up to run for city office. I really do appreciate your willingness to serve. And I'd like to thank the residents of Ward one for your past support and contacting me with questions and bringing concerns and ideas forward. And I really do think that that input is important and I hope that we continue to have that dialogue and relationship going forward. I would appreciate your vote in November. Even if I'm running unopposed, by casting your ballot, it shows that you're interested and you're paying attention, so please make sure you exercise that right. It's been my privilege to serve as your council member and I would be honored to continue to represent you in Ward one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving to the Ward three candidates. And they are Frank Hausman and Melody Shriak. And we'll start with Frank Hausman's opening statement, please.
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening, fellow Ramsey residents. My name is Frank Hausman V., and I'm currently running for city council, Ward three. Here in Ramsey, I enjoy living in a city where a little bit of urban life meets country living. And I'll strive to make this a place where businesses will be happy to set up shop and not have to worry about excessive taxation or policies that may not apply. Let's face it, Ramsey's not very business-friendly. And that's because of strict policies that we may have in place. And we need to be able to become more friendly, more cooperative, so that we can continue to grow our tax base. While still keeping taxes reasonable for the public and also the businesses, we can continue to provide more for our residents, so we don't have to continue to go to Coon Rapids or Elk River for everything. I'm also a firm believer in a strong fiscal policy. Less money spent is more money saved. And when that happens, you have less, you have less taxes increased on the people. And when you have less taxes increased, we're all happy. And, you know, we don't have to cover the government's debt with more taxes. And a few months ago, as some of you may remember, there is a franchise fee battle going on to help pay for our roads. And that would have been an $8 fee on each utility bill and total $16. If the city would, would just manage their finances correctly and get the ball rolling, we wouldn't have this problem. And again, I'll continue to fight for us and be a voice for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Shriak.
Thanks, Jerry. Again, my name is Melody Hesselgrave-Shriak. And I've lived in Ramsey for over 25 years. I grew up here. I moved back here with my family to be by my family. And so it's dear to my heart. And I've been married for 22 years. We have two children. A lot of my hobbies involve things that I can do right here in Ramsey. Art, bicycling, enjoying parks, soccer. And a lot of those things have led me to many volunteer opportunities in the city as well as in surrounding communities. I've been an athletic coach in soccer association. I have volunteered at church. I volunteer with Lyric Arts in Anoka. I am also a lifetime member of the Oak River Rogers VFW and Ladies' Auxiliary. And so I enjoy a lot of activities and volunteering with the community and serving those around me. And that's just how I was brought up and I continue to do that. So city council is my next step as school with the kids is getting a little bit less as they get older. They don't need me there as much and I'm really looking forward to getting more involved with the city. Some of you may not be aware that I did serve on the Ramsey Park Commission for 11 years. Many of those years as either vice-chair or chair. And I was honored, one of my last years, with the Minnesota State Park and Recreation, Park and Recreation Association Commissioner of the Year Award, which was probably, I think, one of the greatest honors I've received over my career. And so that's been a really great opportunity to talk about what the city has available, what it does, and talk about resources and share that information with everyone. So I've enjoyed that opportunity through the commission, through QCTV and other resources. I do have a city planning background, transportation planning, as well as I'm working on all levels of government at city, county, and state. So I believe that my background, my experience with the commissions will be well-served and give me the opportunity to help make good decisions with the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody, you'll be first on this first question on taxes. What items could be admitted from the city budget so that taxes could be lowered?
Okay. This is probably one of my weak areas right now, so I'll admit that upfront. I'm not a huge money person. And I do, when I'm working on a specific project, I am very mindful of how that is done. But looking at the big picture, I am aware of the CIP. I have been involved in many CIP processes to look at our overall budget. But when it's looking at line items, I've always been kind of involved in more specific areas. So that's where my knowledge lies. So I guess when I look at that and with any issue that comes, comes before us at a council level, I would be taking all of the details that are provided to us, the CIP, the city's finance, finances of it that are available, the tax base that we're able to work with, all of those factors and help make those decisions. There's always tough cuts and tough decisions and I'm willing to make those. And I really pride myself on working on making those responsible decisions and really trying to help balance everything the best we can.
Frank Hausman.
You know, it's kind of a, it's a loaded question because there are so many things that go into place in that. I really don't have a lot of experience with that either. But I think it comes down to general finances. You spend within your means. And if they have to, you know, for example, in gen, personal life, maybe can't get that caribou visit in this week, you know? But it'll help you in other areas. And I think that's really what's important. It comes to fiscal responsibility. And when it comes down to specific items, that's kind of a case-by-case policy. And I, without actually diving in and taking a closer look at it, I don't think I could totally give a solid answer on that. But definitely, once it's, once I'm in there, you know, we'll take a look and see what cuts can be made.
Thank you. Frank Hausman, you'll be first on this one on roads. We have to talk about roads, right?
Of course, yeah.
Ramsey continues to look for the best ways to finance both road repair and new construction. How should funds be made available for this?
Well, funds are made available every year in a levy that we vote on, that of course, we have to pay for. But I don't think an extra tax on the people is the right way to do it either. Because right now, we're all struggling, even though that, you know, the economy may be getting better, we're all still struggling as people. And, you know, we have to, I think the way that we're doing it now with the tax levies and I believe it's the bonds that we're doing, as Jill said, is working. And that's, that's what we have in place. That's what's working. Let's not add anything.
Thank you. Melody Shriak.
Okay. As we've all been aware, roads are a tough subject and it always has been. We have very few gravel roads left in Ramsey, but those, you know, those take maintenance as well. So no matter what kind of road we're looking at, we really need to find a way. And I think where we're at right now with, working with the taxes and the bonding together, we've kind of reached a reasonable solution for now. Council's worked very hard to find that solution. But we do have further work to do on that to find out how we can sustain that further into the future. And that's certainly an important factor that we're going to want to consider. Whether that looks like further bonding levies, development costs that happen when we develop certain areas, it's going to be a tough thing. But really to look at assessing a single property owner is really a tough thing because none of us, I think, could probably afford the assessment that it would take to, to fix the road right in front of our home. So I, we do need a combination. I appreciate that council's looking at that and I hope that I can be part of looking at some further creative solutions.
Thank you. Okay, Melody, as a city council member, how will you work with and utilize the views and recommendations of your city commissions?
Okay. Well, as a city, past city commissioner or council or commission member on the Parks Commission, I really appreciate the opportunity to interact with council as well as with citizens. So as a council member, I think our commissions are invaluable resources to us. And they're our next step to getting in touch with residents. They tend to hear a lot more about things unless someone's really upset or something. I think our commissions hear more about topics and issues. So I think it's very important for council to be working with all of the commissions, attending commission meetings when we can, and really being involved and aware of what their discussions are. Because if we don't know what they're talking about on their level, when it comes to our level, we could be duplicating those same discussions or we could be totally not aware of certain issues that have already been considered. So I think that discussion needs to continue through all the way from the bottom on up. And I would look forward to, just as I've seen past council members attending commissions and really being an interactive part with them.
Thank you. Frank Hausman.
I'd have to agree with Melody. You know, it really does start from the bottom up and the commissions are going to be the ones that are going to hear, you know, most of everything from the city, from the residents. And, you know, it's, and then in turn, commissions report to us and say, hey, this is what's going on. You guys need to make, you know, make known this is what's up. And, and it's our job as a city council to act. But also, you know, we really don't hear the bigger, you know, what's going on on the individual basis because, well, it's more of if somebody has a bigger complaint or a bigger issue. So the commissions are very important and we do need to continue to work closely with them in order to get things done in the city.
Thank you. What is your philosophy of the purpose of city government, Frank Hausman?
My philosophy on the purpose of city government is to provide for the well-being of the citizens of the city. Not take advantage of the people, but be a working partner with the people because we work for you. We're elected by you. You're our boss. So that is very key when it comes to the philosophy and the role of the city council in a city, is for us to remember that. And so often than not, that's where our local politicians and national lead astray. But we, as a city council, have the pleasure to work directly with you. And that is one thing that is essential to keep in mind.
Thank you. Melody Shriak.
Well, I think that the city has started to move towards a process that allows that interaction a little more of, of working with people and I think that's wonderful. We are, as council members, representatives of our fellow citizens. And I think that they should be able to contact us, talk to us anytime that they need, express their views, express their opinions. And as we move further into the future, I hope to really help facilitate some of that public participation process. We started, I think, a good chunk of that a number of years ago. If anybody remembers the Ramsey three, the R3 process that we went through, we had probably 40 or 50 members from the community come and help participate in organizing and detailing out what our future plans and development for the city may look like. And I think that's a wonderful opportunity for all of us. So I really hope to, to continue that open discussion with everyone, be able to work on that information exchange between the citizens and the staff and the council and the commissions. And that's one of the things that I always really work towards is that open communication and dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. You may have just touched on this, Melody, but what do you want to accomplish if you're elected?
Well, what is my agenda? I don't really have an agenda, I guess, to be straightforward about it. I am not up here for a particular item. I am up here because I enjoy serving. I am proud of Ramsey. I have been part of Ramsey for a very long time. And I really want to be able to use the knowledge and the abilities that I have to help serve my, my ward as well as the residents of Ramsey at large. I think that I bring really good problem-solving, negotiation skills, discussion abilities. And I really love the opportunity to help share information. to help share information. I think if we don't share information together, one idea and another idea are just going to continue to go side by side. But by having those open discussions, those open forums, and the ability to talk with each other, and look at all the information together, we can maybe come to an understanding that may be better than any of us had thought, and really get us to a point that we're all proud of.
Thank you. Frank Hausmann.
My agenda is very similar in the fact to where I don't have a personal political agenda, and I never will. Again, I work for you guys. My agenda is you. Making sure that there's proper public infrastructure for you to be able to enjoy the city. And with, if you can't enjoy the city, you're not going to be happy. So I would have to say my agenda would be personal, not personal, specific cases that come to our floor, and go on a case-by-case process. You know, I don't think it's right for anybody to have a personal agenda. And, or even, you know, you can have ideas and dreams of what you would like to do. But it really comes down to what is on the plate at the time. And I would love to continue to provide, working with the council, to provide those infrastructure, and the great roads, and all of that good stuff that we like to take advantage of in the city.
Thank you. Have you accepted any donations from developers in Ramsey? If so or if not, do you consider that a conflict of interest? Frank Hausmann.
I have not accepted any contributions or anything from developers in the city. I have a lot of things going on at the same time. And, kind of like Jill, I'm honest, I'm struggling a little bit. But you know what? My focus is you. And I will fight for you. I will be your voice. Because we're a team. And, and I don't think that it should really matter whether who gets donations from who. You know, they're donations from a specific person, or an organization, or a business. That's who they want to back. That's who they want to win. So I don't think that it's intentional to be a conflict of interest at all.
Thank you. Melody Schreier.
Well, first off, yes. I guess I have to say that plain. But I think Frank hit the nail on the head. I am running for city council because this is something that I believe in. I believe in the city. I believe in serving the residents. And I think that anyone that has ever worked with me in any capacity knows that I try to be a fair and impartial person. So I don't believe that it's a conflict of interest. I believe that it's a means to get me to my goal, which is serving Ramsey. And I don't take that in favor of any particular issue or topic, if that were to come up. I will give every person, and every issue, and every developer, and everything, fair play in whatever is laid before us. And that will never sway any decision that I ever make. I find myself to be very impartial in that area. And, again, I just want to look at the facts, and make the best decisions that are for my ward and for our citizens.
Thank you. Is business development a staff-only issue, or should individual council members, or the council as a whole, be directly involved? Melody?
I'm first, huh? Okay. Well, I think we have started to develop a process in the city at this point that I think is going to work for us. By moving more towards an EDA, I think that they can take kind of the leadership role on a lot of that, using staff as, as resources and feedback. Councils and commissions, again, can help support that information, or deter that, based on what they know of and the research that they do. So I think we're getting into a situation where we have that development coming from the EDA as an entity in its own, rather than using staff resources. It allows our staff to focus on, on all the other tasks that they have to do, while still having that right hand to help them out. And then, again, using the council and the commissions as a resource for that. So I think that there's, there's levels of involvement for everyone, but I don't think it sits on any particular shoulders. And I think that's the way to do it. I think that's the way we get a well-rounded view of things, and perhaps get to a larger view of things.
Thank you. Frank Hausmann.
I, I don't believe that the, the city council should have a direct role in directing a specific type of development. Right now, the Ramsey City Council is in the process of getting rid of the HRA, which has been kind of haunting the city council. And I think that's a first step into things, you know, getting it off of our shoulders on the, on that intense development piece, because we are not a real estate agent here as a city. We are a city council that helps to direct infrastructure for the commonwealth of the people. And, and if a developer wants to come to us with an idea of what they would like to do in our city, okay, do they have the means and the funds to buy the land, or just take care of it on their own, and say, we have the final decision on yes or no, we want that for our city or not. But I think the way that we're going right now is a great process.
Thank you. Let's talk about housing a little bit here. How should the city address the need for affordable housing, Frank Hausmann?
This is a tough one. Because I think that everybody should be able to have a roof over their head, food in their stomach, and be able to live, and not feel like they have to be out in the cold, and, or in the extreme heat, and go hungry. So it's kind of, it's kind of a catch-22 on what to do with this. I think that there should be some form of housing available. But I guess, kind of, it's, 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 it's hard to kind of pinpoint on that. Because your heart pulls in one way. And I, I'm, I love people. And my heart goes out to those who don't have housing. And, but I think if we went about it in a logical way, and a correct manner, it can be done.
Thank you. Melanie Schreier.
Well, I think Ramsey has a unique opportunity before it. With the development of the core here, we have the resources, we have the ability to kind of create that community where we have a variety of housing needs, housing resources available for everyone. And my opinion in development and planning has always been working within smart development. We provide housing where it's most logical and most appropriate. So we have homes that have acreage further out in Ramsey. We may do multifamily, and sectionate housing, and things like that in the core. In order to provide a variety of housing, that, that has to happen. And really, if you're talking about a sustainable community, too. Folks that are in the middle of Ramsey, someday may want to sell their home, but still want to stay here. Where's that going to be affordable for them? Maybe a townhome or an apartment. The most logical places to put that type of housing is where there's transportation, where there's amenities available for them. And so walkable community areas for that as well. So that would be my stress, is kind of, working more towards the core and a livable area where transportation is here.
Thank you. It's time to go for your closing statements now. Would you give us your closing statement, please, Melanie Schreier?
Well, I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. The great questions and opportunity for us to start getting our brains working into the mode of being a council member. It's a big job. And I certainly don't take that lightly. Again, my heart comes with serving, and serving in every job that I do. Any place that I work with, any task that I take on, I do it 100%. So I would really respect and honor the position of a council member. I look forward to the opportunity to create dialogue among all of those within the city, be it staff, resident, or council or commission. And I would really welcome the opportunity to use my abilities to contribute to the varied opinions and abilities on the council as well. So I hope that I can count on votes out there. And I look forward to serving as a city council member, starting in 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Hausmann, your closing statement, please.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. Thank you to you guys for being here, and your wonderful questions. There's a lot that needs to get done here, guys. And, yes, I'd probably be the youngest voter, you'd, a city council member you'd ever vote for. But I think with, maybe my young spite, I can, I'd like to bring a new energy to the, to the council. And it's, no job is easy. But politics is a passion of mine. And I want to work for you. I want to serve for you. And I hope I get that opportunity, and you vote me in for 2015. Thank you.
Thank you to these two candidates for Ward III of the City of Ramsey. Now we'll move to the at-large candidates, who will serve the entire city. And Wayne Buchholz will have your opening statement first.
Okay. Good evening. I would first like to thank the Women's League of Voters, League of Women's Voters, for giving us this opportunity. And my name is Wayne Buchholz. I'm a resident of Ramsey for nearly 10 years. I've been married to my wife Maria for 41. I've been in management for 35 years. I'm now retired. I've also been in the Marine Corps. I served our country during Vietnam, and served one term Vietnam. And right now, I have the absolute privilege of running for candidate at-large, which I'm thrilled. Why am I running? A few years ago, I noticed things were happening on the city that I wondered about. I wondered why we keep hiring more staff, especially seeing when we seemed like we were just getting our staffing under control. Why do we spend so much, or why do we spend so much to remove a triple X building? Why does a developer who purchases land in Ramsey constantly make contributions to some council candidates? Why aren't our roads getting fixed? And where are all the new businesses? So I started attending, attending meetings. In fact, I attended meetings for the last two, two years, practically even a little bit longer than that, closer to two and a half years. And I probably show up more than some of the council members. And hopefully, tonight, I can shed some light on that, and give you an idea on what I've learned.
Thank you. Christine Williams, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Christine Williams. I'm running for Ramsey City Council at Large. I've lived in Ramsey for the past 12 years, with my husband Sean, and our children, Brennan and Evelyn. I'm a graduate of Anoka High School, and I grew up in Andover. I have a Bachelor of Science degree, and an MBA from the University of St. Thomas, where I studied finance, and business, and real estate. I manage a large corporate real estate portfolio for Canadian Pacific. I am not a developer, and I am not a broker, but I am responsible for making strategic decisions about a real estate portfolio that supports the core business of my organization. The skills I use each day will be valuable assets to the city council as we make strategic, excuse me, strategic decisions about city-owned property throughout the community. I will support the council by bringing a market-based perspective as we strive to balance the vision carefully crafted by the community for each of our new developments, with current market influences, and the desire to return the property to the private sector. For the past five years, I've served on Ramsey's Economic Development Authority. During that time, the city has seen a successful build-out of two business parks, adding living wage jobs, and contributing tax bases to our community. The EDA is making plans to support a third business park west of the core to leverage existing infrastructure, and plan road improvements to continue growing the city's commercial tax base. I am excited about the opportunity to work with a team that is committed to making good decisions for the City of Ramsey. While I may not, may not always agree with the other council members, I will be respectful, and I will work together to achieve the strategic goals set in place for the, for the city. I am confident with my experience and background. I am the best candidate for this position. I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And you get the first question here. When considering redevelopment and revitalization for the city, how would you maintain existing opportunities and present new opportunities?
I think the city's strategic plan, and the, the comprehensive plan in place, sets forth a really good measure of how we can build on what we have in our community, and how we want to see new businesses and new opportunities come in. It's important that we understand what the comprehensive plan means, and how we can work to make good decisions that support both that, within that plan, and support our strategic vision for the future. I think that we need to rely on the council that we have, to work together and make those decisions based on the best interests of Ramsey, and really build on the opportunities that we've set in place, to engage with the community, and understand what our residents want, and what our residents need, in order to make this a place that we're all proud to be.
Thank you. Wayne Buchholz.
Well, I agree that, that we do need more businesses in this, in this city to help, need more businesses in this city to help offset the tax base. But I don't believe that it's the city's job to look and seek businesses. I think that they should give a, a, what business wants, which is basically roads, fire, police, and a good, fair tax. Don't overtax them. Give them a chance to survive and flourish. And in doing so, I think that that's how you're going to grow your base.
Thank you. This one is kind of following on that one, on the last question. It's on TIF, or TIF financing, tax increment financing. What incentives are appropriate for the City of Ramsey to offer to business wanting to locate in Ramsey? Wayne Buchholz.
Well, first of all, I'm not a big fan of TIF to begin with. It, as far as I'm concerned, is an entity that basically softens the, the market, and, and brings, or forces businesses to look for such deals. And I, I honestly don't think TIF is, is what we need in, in this state, period. I think that, unfortunately, it's throughout half of our cities, or most of our cities. And that, that in itself is a problem. So personally, I'd like to see it gone. That, that's my own personal opinion of TIF.
Okay. Christine Williams.
I think tax increment financing and other resources that are available through economic development programs, both within the city and the county, as well as those available through the state, are important things that we need to recognize as a community, that we can use to leverage the great things going on in Ramsey, to invite the best people, the best businesses, to move into our city. I think that it's important that we understand the long-term implications of implementing some of these strategies. And it's really very important that we recognize what TIF would do if we were to employ that within our, within our community now. I think the market is changing. I'm excited about the opportunities that are presented just outside of our door here. And I really think that a TIF district in the core may not be the most appropriate way to incent the development at this time. But I do think it's very important that we recognize what resources could be available, and use them very strategically, and be cautious, and understand the implications of what those decisions might be.
Thank you. What is your philosophy of the purpose of city government?
I believe that the purpose of city government is to provide the basic resources within our community. But more importantly than that, within the environment we live in now, the city is responsible for being an advocate for our community and for our residents. Whether that's with the county, the state, or the national level, it's important that we are the biggest cheerleaders for our community, that we can stand up in front of whatever audience that is, and we can be great representatives, not just good representatives, great representatives of our city. It's not just about what the city government does, it's about what our city means. It's part of who we are. We are all residents. The decisions that we make impact each of us individually. And I think it's really important that we elect people who we are proud to be as our own representatives, and recognize how that will then play out across, across our nation.
Thank you. Wayne Buchholz.
Well, I also agree that, that city government, and, or government in general, basically should just be involved in infrastructure. should just be involved in infrastructure, police and fire. Anything over and above that is just getting out of its realm. And I do agree with my opponent here when she says that we should be great cheerleaders for our community. But with the same token, we're hiring out for lobbyists to come on in and do the job that we should be doing. And again, that's something that we're doing right now, which I don't agree with. So that's where I'm at on that.
Thank you. What attributes would you bring to the council to help members work together for the benefit of the city? Wayne Buchholz.
Well, hopefully a stubbornness that would open their eyes to looking outside the box instead of always within the box. They do have a tendency of always, example, when they talk about raises, they're always looking at a city that is similar in size and what they're paying their employees. And I don't agree that government should be the benchmark for wages. And I think that that should be done by private sector. And I think we should be looking at private sector for where the prices and wages should be coming from and benefits.
Thank you. Christine Williams.
I am committed to working with the council and the staff to put our heads together and make the best decision for the city of Ramsey. I think it's really important that we recognize each of each other's strengths and know that in the end, each of the council members are trying to make the best decision possible for the community. My experience and my education have given me a lot of opportunities to really learn how to work as a team and how to find the way to, for each of the pieces that we put into any particular project or discussion, in the end, the sum would be greater than, how does that go again? The whole will be greater than the sum of its parts. I know that when we work together, what we get out in the end is amazing. I've experienced that on the EDA where I thought I knew what the answer to some question would be. And after having a discussion with the others and the other people in the room, the other commissioners and council members, my eyes have really been opened to see different perspectives and unique ideas. And in the end, everyone is really interested in making this a great community and I will be committed to working with them to do that.
Thank you. What would be your plan for financing street improvements and more aggressive street maintenance? Christine Williams.
Thank you. I think that there is no right answer to the street question, but I think it's important that the council can spend a little bit more time thinking about other opportunities that would lessen the burden on the individual taxpayers through special assessments. The city needs to find a way to budget for this road. And in the past, through a series of decisions that were made by former councils, the budget has been shrunk year after year without understanding how the implications long-term would really play out with that. We need to budget today for what's going to happen 10 years from now. That could mean that more of our tax dollars, more of our levy each year would go towards a fund that would support those future tax, future road improvements. There also needs to be a combination of support from the community. I would look to the council to have a good thoughtful discussion about what opportunities are out there, reevaluate other ideas that could be on the table, and find a good solution that will work for Ramsey.
Thank you. Wayne Buchholz.
Well, I'm a firm believer that your road repairs come out of your levy and that there is, it's a good, fair way of doing things primarily because your home is probably the fairest tax that any of us are ever going to pay. And with that, everybody's going to be paying the same percentage depending on the value of their home. So if you own a $5,000 home, you're going to pay a little bit more than you're going to pay for someone that owns a $100,000 home. But with that being said, assessments unfortunately are part of, is part of the equation and that I believe that they lowered the assessment to 20%, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And in doing so, that should make it a lot more tolerable.
Thank you. Let's stay with this infrastructure for another question here. What other infrastructure issues are you concerned about? Wayne Buchholz.
Well, I'm not really too concerned too much. I think that it seems like in the core area, the infrastructure that we have here is pretty much in place. What we have the problem with right at the present time is our aging roads, which is something that I think Jill John said that they pretty much have that wrapped up, although it could be tweaked a little bit. But as far as new infrastructure, I would think that that would come along with developers or businesses.
Thank you. Christine Williams.
I think there are two points that I'd like to touch on regarding infrastructure. The first being Highway 10 and understanding the implications behind that and the efforts that the council has put forth to provide the funding for an overpass at Armstrong. I think that's improving Highway 10 corridor and working with the Anoka County and the state to find ways to make good improvements that are cost-effective but still meet the needs of the community are going to be essential with the next council needs to work together. The other is strategic planning of future sewer and water expansions that fit within the scope of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is there to guide the future growth of the community. I would like to see dense housing and dense commercial development centered around Highway 10 and that corridor. There's infrastructure in place and understanding the implications of extending sewer and water, what that means to our current and future residents, needs to be taken into consideration when evaluating those options.
Thank you. Have you accepted any donations from developers in Ramsey? And if so or if not, do you consider that a conflict of interest? Christine Williams.
Thank you. I have been very fortunate to receive contributions from several people in our community. Some of them do have controlling interests of development companies within this area. I do not think that is a conflict of interest. I would be perhaps more concerned if someone who had that much of a vested interest financially and personally in this community didn't want to support some of the council members in some way or another. I would never let something like financing control the decisions that I make. And I hold myself to a very high standard ethically and I'm quite passionate about decisions such as real estate and what that means within the market. I'm excited about bringing my perspective to the council. And if that were clouded in any way, I'd think that I would be doing myself and my community certainly a disservice. I do not think that that will be an issue.
Thank you. Wayne Buchholz.
Well, I have not accepted any contributions from developers in this community. And, but I do feel that there could be a possible conflict of interest. I feel that if you have too many people, and right now we have five of the seven council members that have already accepted contributions from developers in the community, this could lead to a perception of unethical dealings going on. And that's where I have a problem.
Thank you. What is the role of the city council in dealing with foreclosures in the city? Wayne Buchholz.
Foreclosures and back taxes are you referring to?
Yeah. This is, if there are houses that are in foreclosure, is there any role for the city in that situation?
No, that's private business.
Christine?
I think it's important that the city has ordinances that help neighbors that are still in their homes feel confident that there are certain expectations with respect to a home that is now vacant. I believe that we have those in place. I think it's important that the city can work with the bank or whoever the homeowner is after that family moves out and can find resources that would allow that bank or whomever that might be to make sure that the neighborhood is not adversely impacted by the vacancy in a house. And then importantly too, you had a question earlier that Jill John's, I thought, answered very eloquently regarding homeless youth. I think it's important that we continue to support community endeavors such as Youth First that support families in need, whatever that need may be.
Last question before closing statements. What do you want to accomplish if you're elected? Christine Williams.
I don't come to the council with a bag of grievances or issues that I want to revisit. I am really truly excited about the opportunity to work with a bunch of people who I feel have our interest at heart. I have a lot of experience and knowledge that I am excited to bring to support our community. I will be an advocate for this community and my neighbors. And I really think that by working together and putting our heads together, being thoughtful and respectful of each other, we will always come up with the right decision. We'll come up with great decisions and solutions to the issues that we face.
Thank you. Wayne Buchholz.
Well, could you repeat your question, please?
What do you want to accomplish?
Yes. I don't come in here with any kind of accomplishments, goals. I want to serve the community. I want to do the best job I can possibly do for the community. I want to see the city grow, but I wanted to see it grow through private development. I want to see our tax burden go down. And that's where I'm at. I really don't have a whole lot of expectations. I just come in here with an open mind.
Thank you. Okay. Wayne Buchholz, your closing statement, please.
Again, I would like to thank all of those who took time out of their evening to listen to the candidates for City Council of Ramsey. I think the choice is clear. No other candidate has spent more time preparing for a position of Ramsey City Council member than I have. I attended nearly all the council meetings for the past two years. I know the council members, I know the issues, and I think I have some of the solutions.
Thank you. Christine Williams.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight and allowing me the opportunity to speak with you. I've really appreciated this chance to see each of you and answer these questions. I really feel that my experience and my background is going to be an asset to the community. I'm excited at the opportunity to work with the existing council, with the commissions, and with others in the community to find good, sound decisions that will support our moving forward in a positive way. I am confident that my experience and my background makes me the best candidate for this position and I'd like to ask for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to remind you that the views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. And we are not, the sponsorship is not an endorsement of any candidate. On behalf of the League of Women Voters ABC, thank you for coming and thank you for watching this event to learn about the candidates for the city of Ramsey. Thank you to the candidates for participating in this forum and for being willing to serve your community and participate in the democratic process by running for office. Our democracy depends on people like you and we thank you. Check out the Secretary of State's website to find your complete personalized sample ballot. It's called MNvotes.org. And you can click on the candidates' websites to get more information and get information on registering and where to vote. And for heaven's sakes, remember to vote on Election Day, November 4th. Thank you so much.[1787.11][1787.11][applause]